I'd call this meeting of the town council from the city of Wausau together. If you would please stand with us. Mr. Robinson Lee Wood is going to offer our invitation tonight. Robinson Wood is a native of this area. His mother and nanny both served on this council over the years, and he's come back here to retire. And we're glad to have you with us tonight. Would you please offer the invitation? You ready? Yes, sir.
I have been a father. We thank you for your kindness and your blessings to us. We thank you for the history of this old town. We appreciate all the kind things that have happened and come forth from it. We pray tonight that your guidance, right? These officials that have been elected to their jobs, that they will look forward to mighty wonderful things in your will and your purpose. Father bless us tonight. Keep us loving towards you and towards each other. We ask you to all in the lovely name of our great God and our soon coming King. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. Mr. Stevens is going to lead us. Okay, we'll face this one. Everybody face that way. We'll make you ask and ask you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone will please make sure you have your mics not only attached but turned on. Okay, you've each had the opportunity, I think, to look at the agenda. And what's the pleasure on the consent agenda? What's the pleasure of the council on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, is that accept second and second by Mr. Morrison. Have any discussion on the motion. How you vote, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wiz?
Yes.
Yes.
Sheriff, yes. Okay. We don't have any agenda audience, but we have one that is signed in. Is that all?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Angie Roberts. You wanted to address the council tonight?
Oh, good.
Please, come on.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I had come here in August and talked to y'all about Basic, setting up and doing an event in Wausau. And it's never been put on the agenda to be voted for. So that's kind of why I'm here today.
I told her we were sort of waiting for our building here, our grand hall, but she was looking to come and dress all the way in. She said they didn't need the building.
Yeah.
So whenever I was here before, you said that you would, that y'all would vote on it and that the fire chief said that they would provide a space for us to, said a testing van for PanCare. And so anyway, I'm just coming back to, you know, see if we could get a vote on that from the council.
Quite honestly, it's not been discussed anymore. It's one of those things like many things that comes before us and gets in our book. And if it's not put back on the agenda as a table item or something like that, it hasn't been discussed any longer. Not to minimize what we're trying to do. You know, as we all do, outside out of mind. And since then, we've had to deal with the budget, preparation budget, adoption, some things like that. Anyone have a better response than that? Please offer it. Or a different response? I think, I think I'm accurate.
Yes, sir.
Did we know it? Probably just.
Would it be possible for us to ask for it to be put on the agenda to be voted for?
You can ask.
I'm asking.
I thought you were. All right, what's the opinion of the council?
Let's put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Are we going to vote tonight or just on?
We're going to vote tonight or December.
Put it on the agenda. Well, are you ready to vote tonight? I mean, this is, this is the council. It is order.
When were you planning on that, Ms. Danny?
We would need 30, at least 30 days to coordinate with PanCare. It would be something we would probably do January, February.
As I recall, you want to be given that literature.
We would be providing, we would be providing your constituents free access to HIV and hepatitis C testing. We would have literature on abstinence, hepatitis A, B, and C facts, HIV facts. We would also, if anyone needed connection to care, we have grant money that provides medication to people. And, you know, just basically, we're doing outreach into communities. It's really important that we reach out to our rural communities and make sure that people, if they would desire to know their status, they have an opportunity to do that at no cost. It's would be no cost for y'all, the city. And I feel it's a really great service for any community.
And what kind of referrals would you?
If someone is, if someone is hepatitis C positive, we would refer them to the hepatitis clinic that would provide them medication to save their lives. We are not, I think you're kind of getting at, because you asked me before if we refer, considering around the abortion issue. We do not, we are not a pregnancy center. We are not a pregnancy testing center. We do not refer to that other than if someone wanted to know what local services were available to them in their county. We have a card that is provided through, I believe, the Department of Health. And it's the 211 card that gives them access to their, their local services that are available to them in one location. Which is great, because they don't have to call all over town looking for services.
I'm very concerned that we're not subsidizing Planned Parenthood. You just listened to that.
We do not work for Planned Parenthood.
I don't make work for them. I mean, refer to them and something.
Well, we don't have Planned Parenthood, I believe, in our, in our area. But we do not refer to Planned Parenthood. We are, that is not our issue.
And that's my opinion. I'm not speaking for the council. I'm speaking as a member of the council.
I understand and I get that. And I'm here asking on behalf of Basic. And I have my own opinions too on my personal self.
Absolutely. Okay, are you asking for us to put it on the agenda for December to be voted on? Or you want to vote on it tonight? Or you was just asking a question?
Let's vote on it in December.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
A motion to vote, to agenda this item for a vote in December? Is our second to the motion?
Our second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wiz?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
And Sheriff, she is. Okay, we'll vote on it.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you for the nice reminding us. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
We will, and please feel free to be at our December meeting or Margaret can let you know every, what's good for you. It'll be close to the holidays. I don't know what your schedule will allow.
We're really busy. We have World AIDS Day coming up, December 1st, and lots of events around that. And y'all know, the holidays are just busy.
They are.
They're just busy. We have functions and.
Well, thank you for telling me.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't believe so. I appreciate your time. I appreciate y'all putting it on the agenda and bringing it to a vote. And just keep in mind that we are, we can do great things for people.
Now, do y'all have a van or a bus or something? You just set up and fit it in the area?
We have a, we have a testing van on order for ourselves. You know, of course, you know, everything's slow getting into the country right now. So we've actually been delayed until February, tentatively when we're going to receive our own personal one. But what we do is we, if we need testing vans, we coordinate with PanCare. And I think PanCare being a partner with us on this event is a correct idea.
They used to, they used to come here once a month, wasn't it?
Yes. So that is something we would have to contact them, work out those logistics, and we're willing to do that.
People helping people is a good thing.
I think so.
Thank you for coming and we'll put this on the agenda for December.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, Matt Stewart.
Hey. Y'all, at the last meeting, y'all decided that we would discuss the sign for the, that the Development Club had proposed for us. And they're in your packets. They're probably close to some of the minutes there. But we had one, you know, and this, uh.
It's like three pages. You got the.
Is it before Tim?
Is after.
After.
It's about probably three, four pages.
About two of them. And we're going to look at these and discuss if we. The one is just the sign, like we have like the Dalton Park sign. It's just a lighting sign. It's not the LED sign. Is around, it's taken around $200. And the others around.
Is there a stamp or we're only looking at two?
We're only looking at two is what they sent us to look at. One of them is $51.99, around $5,200. And the LED sign, which is all really black, is more to around $7,000, you know?
Okay, is that this one?
Yes.
And this is the fifth. And I'm just guessing, right? I had my choice before.
Well, I was already at $16,000. We're down to $75. Of course, it's $5,200.
I was thinking that's what it was. But anything signed $16,000?
Yes, sir. Which is beautiful, you know, but.
Get some attention.
Everybody get attention.
It, it really. There's somebody at the salt first this time.
What's the second, what's the second one?
Right there, that one.
And this one is how much, the second one?
$5,200. Which is not much more than we pay for the Dalton Park or sign of.
I like the LED light itself. Is City Wausau, the other ones going to be having to pay for?
No, the Development Club. They're wanting to partner with us on this. You know, they're going to first put some money up towards it too.
Are they down to one? I mean, is the garden club or anybody else going to?
The garden club may help. I'm not sure of that.
I don't know, I don't know if they, if they have a treasury. I don't know how that works.
The garden, yeah, the garden club does.
They did, but I tend to regular.
They have a treasury, so it's for the garden club.
I would think that some of your COVID money might kick in too if you're using it to direct people to a testing or vaccination site.
Yeah, our Harper lines can go.
I was going to say that. Harper mine. I like LED.
I like the LED.
Ms. Morrison?
I don't have, I don't have an opinion, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm telling you, y'all spoke first, we called. That's, I really like that one. I like it well enough that's the one that I submitted to our contractor to take a look at to replace our sign that was escorted to church by the storm. You don't go out there and put letters on it. You sit in here on the computer on a rainy day or a cold day or a hot day for that matter, puts a program in there. Now somebody will have to train them that. But sometimes it is better, Steve, thank you. It's better than it has been. But sometimes we've had things that was supposed to do. And weeks or 10 days after the event was over with, it was still down there. Somebody hadn't took the letters down or they got the letters up on the afternoon before the event was the next day. It's just, it's just.
It's hit now.
It's labor intensive to use that.
That's the time to figure out which letters and how to fill everything.
Yeah. Spin it, lay it out and get in it and drop it. But I agree with the, with those that had an opinion. I like the LED. So.
These prices are guaranteed through January, so.
Okay, now we like it. You'll have it to pay for.
Right. Did Sharon and them say how much they want?
No, they haven't said yet. They're, they wanted the city to pick the sign and then they'll, but they'll meet next week, Steve?
I think it's next week. It's the second, it's the second Monday. But I think they're doing another one next Monday.
Yeah, because of the tree lot.
Yeah.
Well, is it going to be like this one? It's got all festival on it? Is it going to have the same wording?
No, it's going to have Towne Wausau on it. It's all be changed to Towne Wausau.
And that on?
Yeah, that on it.
Okay. Because if you put the garden club, then you got to put the garden club.
Yeah, it's going to be Towne Wausau sign.
Okay.
And it's going to walk to Towne Wausau.
Okay.
And it's going to advertise a code. Besides, we use some codes now.
Right.
Well, I, I, I trust, I trust your judgment. I had not thought about that.
Well, that's what Jeff said last month that we could. And Troy Hopkins said the Harper mine is going to be used for that.
Six feet by four feet, don't they?
Yeah, we need somebody that can, I'm just being cautious. We need somebody that can run that. Because we can do Danny intended and pay it. We can pay it with COVID money. And when the folks comes over here to get that COVID money back, Mr. Morrison and Mr. Carter is not going to have to be the ones that answers for it.
Yeah, I'll check on that.
All folks don't remember Earl Hutto, but he, he and Wayne Mixon was in the House of Representatives once upon a time. They came to our commission meeting. We was having a struggle with, it used to be the Environmental Protection, not D E R, Department of Environmental Regulation. And we had a lot of problems with it. And they say, go to court, we'll do with you. Go to the governor, we'll go with you. Mr. Walter River said, if we go to jail, will you go with us? No? And neither one of those people that were telling us what to do wanted to buy it all from that one. So I believe.
I'll check with Jeff again and I'll check with the state also.
Could we buy, could we pay whatever our portion is?
Without the Harper money we can?
And all, with, all of it coming from that source? I'd be, I'd be much in favor of that.
Well, I just want to know, we're going to have to divide it half and half with the Development Club or three ways with the garden club?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know that.
We know the Development Club, but I think Ms. Merrill Jones is a treasurer for the garden club.
I think so.
Yeah. And they met yesterday, but I did not talk with them. But I can get with them.
So, so where did I find the price page? I saw that when I put that with me, the second page, I think. It's 16, 375. So divided that twice, it's going to be about $80, $200 apiece.
Yeah.
Give it three times. I don't, I know that that garden club will come up and find out.
I don't think they know. But the Development Club will certainly will invest. And I'll agenda it back on the December meeting for a firm vote. We're going to vote tonight to go continue that on.
Let me ask, let me ask the council this. If any of our partners fell out of picture? If neither one of the other agencies could do it, do we still want to sign?
That would be expensive for one person, for one.
It would, but if the government's paying for it, it ain't, it ain't coming out of our money.
That is, if we can get it through the.
That's right. That's right.
So check with them. My surest.
They need a sign.
Yeah, we need.
We need the sign.
We need.
It would be great.
And needs to, we've got a, we've got a new facility over there. We've had some upgrades to the outside. Might as well stand some sprucing. But this sign is, I'm not, for what I want it to be. It looks like you could take a couple of 4'4s and put them up out there and make a field challenge. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm using right now. So there's nothing wrong with that. But if we can do better and, and for check with town, that's, that would, I think would be better. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? Can we, can we at least, can we do this? Can we, can we vote on which one we like tonight? And then let Margaret put it on the agenda for a final vote the next time, with or without partners? And if the, if the, if the Development Club wants to partner, hike with us and the garden club cannot, we're not going to have names on there like all this stuff with names. We're going to have the Towne Wausau. So if Paul buys it for us, it's not going to make any difference. It's just going to be the Towne Wausau. You're safe. Yeah. That was putting illustration purposes. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council on which sign we want?
I vote for the LED light. You motion that?
We have a motion for the LED. Is our second to the motion? We've got a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Ms. Wiz?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter? Yes, the sheriff, she is. Okay.
Okay, the start date for my utility form, I would like for y'all to start her Monday, November 29th. That's the first week in December. So that'll, that'd be, that'd be good.
Has she had a drug in?
She would have it before then.
Okay. And assuming that she passes, she want to start on the limit of 29?
Uh huh.
What's the?
Actually, the start date would be Friday, but we put that Friday. But, you know.
We'll pay what we give on Friday.
Pay what we give on Friday.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council that we had voted and agreed and talked about the first of the year? That our employee is anxious that she was the only, she was the considered employee and.
She won't come on.
Assuming that she can pass the drug in physical. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to let her start on the 29th.
Okay, that's it. We've got a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter? Yes. Ms. Wiz?
Yes.
Sheriff, she is. Okay.
Okay, you have in your package, on the back of your package before you tap there, is an IT proposal for cyber security. You have in there, the first one you have is this information of what they're doing and, you know, but you have a monthly, it's just about a, about 100 or a little better added to our monthly payment that we pay now. And we wanted them to come in to and just do a plan for us without the monthly stuff. See what we need on it is 1850, but 1860. If, could do it by the 30th of November. But this is a big deal here now. And I know it's a lot of information to process. And everybody may not have had time to do this, to look at the services pros and cons of the monthly fee. And this can also, you know, come back in December if y'all want to look at it. We're paying 373 per month now, or about 374, 375 for our IT stuff. And they're proposing to go to 540 per month, you know? And yes, we need it, yes, but we need to weigh the pros and cons after y'all read it to see if we can, you know.
Versus, versus 353.
373 is what we pay in our sign in here now. 373 is what we pay in monthly now, just for their IT support.
And if you go to what time?
540, from 373 to 540.
About $180. Okay, it looks like what I'm looking at is a proposal that's broken down by cost. It is a pick and choose.
I guess you could, you didn't say that. But he'll be glad to come and talk to y'all if y'all wanted to come explain to everybody. And I could be here in here, you know, in December.
And I would be the first to confess that, that I can read this.
I'm okay.
Whether I can comprehend it or not. And if he came, I could hear him, whether I understood what he said or not.
That's important.
How comfortable it, have you read his proposal?
He went over it with you, yes.
Okay.
I come, I am recommending it to y'all? No, I'm not, because I don't fully understand it either.
Okay, is this somebody, this is the people who already have?
Yeah, ran along, ran along to me going.
Okay. Have they changed any names?
They just changed their name. Tech equals from Hope to me, all right, to Tech equals.
Okay. So they're providing, are they providing some of these services?
Yes.
When I read, when I read.
Yeah, there's, some of that's already in there, yes.
They're in the 373 and then they're going to add some more.
To make it.
And charge us some more.
Yes.
Okay, do we need everything that we have that they're already doing for us?
We did, yes.
Do we need what they're going to add to it?
We probably do, but I don't know. I can't do that.
I forgot the key. I thought you was coming in. I set your coffee on the table over there. Jason was hiding it from you.
It's probably cold now. Thank you though, anyway.
Oh. I don't know what else to ask, Mr. Morrison. The council, I don't know what else to ask.
He goes to Discover Life Church down here. So he's here on Thursday nights anyway. So he can come by here and have the full church time and meet with y'all?
Is his price, is just good to them?
No, these prices, this monthly price is good for right off, yeah.
We need an explanation, explanation of what they're going to add before we can understand. I think I agree with that a lot.
I do too.
Okay, I'll ask him here for the December meeting.
I mean, is it going to be more than $5, $100 per month?
If they're right. And we know that the world we live in now, everybody's, our district office was hacked this week, their email account, or they had, they had some of the other things before. But our email server is shut down offline and all now. And every time you hear some been hacked and somebody's identified, of course, that would not maybe be what they get here, but.
Well, I think we have the new SCADA system on our well, don't we? We monitor that well from this office now.
Yeah.
You know, they could, and I have the ability to log in there and change from the top to come on, but they don't today. And we don't want anybody else to be able to do that other than our guys that are able to do that from.
Yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll agenda it for next month to have somebody make a presentation. That's good, but everybody, would you please do that?
Our Christmas parade is December the 11th, 10 a.m. Deposit Palace, we're pulling permits now. It's fixing to go under construction by the first of December, we hope. I would like to route that parade back like it used to be, but route it into the new firehouse bays over there and then go in one bay and out the other. I don't want to open up the front to them or anything like that, but I just want permission to use that firehouse for that, for that.
Is that where Santa Claus is going to be?
Santa Claus is going to be.
In the firehouse.
Yes.
And route the parade to Hail?
Route it, it'll go like the Fun Day Parade does. It'll go out of, Jason signed it the other day. So it'll go out of Glen Avenue, just like the Fun Day, all the way down to Fourth Avenue and back. And Santa Claus will come back right here to the town hall and go in and start his job.
Use the San Vito route.
We always do, yes, sir.
And the whole time?
10 a.m.
10 o'clock.
But, you know, I know the firehouse is not open to the public yet, but we, but I would like to be able to use that for this event.
Wait, I like that.
The bays on.
Bays on, yes.
Yeah, they leave the door for them to come in and mess up.
Yeah, I like everything that we love. And I'd like to see them, if we could, who's going, who, is the fire department with us on this now or we're?
Yeah, we're, they're with.
We're going to get them.
They know.
I'd like for somebody to help us so that we could let children. I'd like for somebody to help us so that we could let children, the people, uh, come in one door, out the other, and just keep a flow going. And, uh, if we can do that.
We're gonna set up a few tables in the back there for serving the cupcakes and punch and all, but then route them out and set a few tables probably outside there for them to eat if they want to, you know. But we like to keep it short and sweet, get them in, get them out, and let them see Santa.
Okay, do we have a Santa?
We will have, the fire department provides the Santa.
Okay.
He may be sitting at the end of the table at a moment.
Ed Conido.
Ed Conido tonight. Fire Department provides the Santa.
You know, every year we sort of deal with just the ambient light in the, up till now in the Possum Palace. If there'd be, I know you'd have a backdrop of some kind for Santa to hold the kids on his knee, you know, in front of, um, I'd like to bring a couple of lights this year for, for the photography, so we get a little bit better quality. And I haven't even been in over there yet to know what you got, but, um, we're probably gonna need that, so I'll coordinate with you, Steve, if that's okay. We'll plan on doing that.
Fire Department's gonna be like, what do we need here and over there for us?
Whatever makes us spooky.
Yeah, and that's the effort there, it's just.
They're in loud as a bunch.
Just don't ask, which side's the good side, yeah?
And that's what I wanna do with that, thank you, I have the pleasure of the council doing that.
Okay, I'd like, you, you need both of you, you're just.
Not just telling us this way, I hope it's fun, baby. I just don't want to make anybody upset or anything, you know, I just want you to like it.
Look for it and do it.
Okay, one of the, we've come across a couple of problems this week. Uh, you know, we're gonna have the Christmas Bazaar and the tree lighting ceremony on the twenty seventh, which is at the monument out there. Our concrete benches out there, they're just about to fall down. We need to replace them with either some, uh, you know, nice wooden benches or nice metal benches or something to get those, we don't want anybody hurt.
They're cracked, I know this one, this one.
Both sides are.
These probably don't look like.
They probably come from, uh, they did probably, or?
South.
South?
I think south.
And then, and then they moved, you know, and all that. But truck supply has some very nice, uh, you know, wooden benches and metal benches, you know, we do. We need a decorative bench out there, too.
Where, where are y'all supposed to put those? I missed that part.
At the monument there, where the concrete little benches are.
Yeah, I know it's in the middle of town, just keep in mind the thievery. Concrete benches are harder to steal than a lightweight truck supply. Sometimes paper security is a boat.
We, we need to, we need to make sure they're anchored on.
We've had them steal the concrete ones from the cemetery, so.
Yeah.
We don't discount a thief, you gotta look at it as a challenge to do it right there in front of everybody.
Yeah.
We should have our like.
I think something, I think something decorative out there for the, for the concrete or change, I think that's, if these were broken, we need to.
I would say it's a concrete which too.
No, that's, I would check there.
Can you get that done by the twenty seventh?
Yes, sir. Eight monthly fixtures, I can, yeah.
Mr. Thorpe, is, is Mr. Thorpe still making the concrete fixtures and benches and stuff, sat at camp Joey Thorpe?
No, they don't do it no more.
They don't do it anymore?
Uh huh, I wish they did.
Thought somebody looked.
But I'll check someone over by them.
Can, can, can I thank you at the box just a moment? If we put something there, I'd like for us to think about, uh, a few years down the future, maybe none of us is, is still serving the end, but they can be, well, ain't how we come through here. We're gonna have sidewalks. Whoever thought we'd see sidewalks in Walsall, John? Whoever thought we'd see paved roads in Walsall? But, uh, what we put there, let's think in the future, like, we may could put some on sidewalks, two or three on each side throughout town, that, that answers that, so.
Fanboys like me.
Yeah, that makes me think about, uh, you know, the, the little metal ones with the rounded bottoms or something like that. I don't know how long the wood will last, even treated wood, I think we need to look at something maybe other than wood, and that's just my, my opinion. I, I try some wood stuff around the house and, actually for five years, even if I, if, if I treated the answer in it and the whatever else. I'd like to go back to it with the concrete or, that's, that's my opinion, that's not what I'm saying we're gonna do, but that's what I, I think.
Uh huh.
What is, what does anybody else think?
I think, well, concrete, I talk better than I have.
Yeah.
I'll see what I can find.
One other thing, our truck went down this week. And, uh, I've talked with Mayor Hagan about it, you know, that, um, and I have not heard from Mr. Parker with Wheeler, but I was wondering, since we have not got any cares money for the county, from the county, would they consider if we purchased a truck to, uh, let that come out of some of our cares money, but I haven't, I sent him an email to that, but I have not heard back from him yet, but I'm waiting to hear. If not, I'll contact Commissioner Hawkins and see if we can get the ball rolling or something. I know we can use our Harper funds, you know, our, but we're using it for everything else and what I'm having to save.
I'm, yeah, who, who's keeping account of our cares and the, uh?
Wheeler and Associates.
And what's this other one, you just talked about the sign?
Yeah, the, that, we do that, they send that directly to the city, we have to account for that.
Okay.
The county is, the county, the cares money was sent to the counties to be dispersed to the municipalities. Our share was seventy thousand dollars in the beginning.
And we have spent how much?
Zero.
Okay, and our Harper funds was how much, hundred and?
Well, we've gotten, it's a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, we've got ninety-nine thousand dollars of that, and we've used that, which, uh, we used, uh, that to, uh, hire these, hire the new employees. And, uh, that's all we've used that far so far, you know.
Okay.
Paying, uh, you know, do the repairs on the road over on Monroe Street, you know.
When I, when I look in here, in the, in the financial, am I, am I gonna find a page that has that account, might say, someplace?
You'll see, uh.
We're gonna have an accounting.
Uh, on your trial balance, you'll see it, yes.
Okay, because we needed to remember a couple of things, one of them is, this is not a recurring fund, it's a hundred and ninety-nine, but if we, I can spend a hundred and ninety-nine quickly. And we've got money that still needs to be replaced in our tower fund that we've put on CD or we were saving or doing something for. Some of this money, if we don't spend it, maybe one day have to make payroll or maybe do some other things, if we have a bad financial year or revenue shared and things like that. Money is the one thing that's no good till you, till you turn it loose. It's, it's, it's no, you can sew it up in your mattress and start today if you don't buy food or freeze today, so. So we'd like to spend it for it to be worth anything to us, but you know that we've gotta spend it on a lot of things, could have to over the years, and, and our finances gets back down, it's better to have some cushion. I, I just, and I know that you all know that, but, uh, so your, your suggestion, your suggestion, your conversation was made, so that everybody knows, I think it was this. We want to check and see if we can buy a, a new truck or, or, or a newer truck.
Newer truck.
Not even, not even a new truck, but a newer truck to replace the one that is most, it, it uses the most.
And keep it as a backup.
And keep the one that we have as a backup, if in fact we hire a second person, a maintenance assistant, something like that, they can put their weed eaters and their tools and things like that on it. I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
Uh, uh, I think it's a better idea. Steve, can you tell me what the status of the gator is?
Yeah, I talked to Greg the other day, uh, we're still waiting on the collect of the national back order. Uh, hopefully, I talked to Don Dero, we're in Freeport, they're hoping to come in next few weeks, um, because they're starting to get parts back, and I should have it probably ready to go and used by January.
Yeah.
There's a little flow.
And I know that your intent to begin with was to use the parts in recognition.
Right.
But that, that would be an ideal.
For the weed eating.
That would be an ideal for the assistant. But if that's going to be fixed and used, then the backup truck is maybe the second best idea.
Well, I mean, they can use the gator, I mean, all I need is force to drag.
Drag the field, that's what I thought.
I mean, I can, I can get it.
Yeah, that gator don't know if it's hauling a weed eater, dragging it, dragging it up baseball field, that's right. Okay. Okay, that, that was our discussion, that we, that we could upgrade our truck, which, uh, probably in a couple of years anyway, may, maybe kind of coming to a place you need to, we could upgrade it if these minutes are available. And, uh, and we have fixed the other one that's in the shop now.
It's out now, we're glad it is.
Got it fixed, okay. I need you to call for me, I couldn't get it, I couldn't get it on for three weeks. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do we pursue, uh, Mr. Parker? Now, we don't, we don't control these, so, so we got to spend them, somebody else is controlling them, so we need to spend their money before we spend our money.
Spending on the truck.
How much do you edit out? Ma'am?
I said if you're spending on the truck, you'll spend it quick.
Yeah. Uh, I'm not sure what, what, what.
I've looked at, uh, it's fallen before, I don't know what a state bid is, maybe I should look on their website, they're like, kind of like a two thousand and eighteen, for like, um, twenty-eight thirties or something, or, or thirties or something like that, you know. It's just a, it's just a, uh, it's a, you know, just a plain Jane truck, that's all it needs, plain Jane truck. You have to, you know, our truck is only eleven years old, it's two thousand and ten, don't have about eighty thousand miles on it, but it's been well abused, and it's like.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Pursue Parker's truck. I'll make a motion for, for, uh, try to see if we can get the truck through Parker.
If we do state bid, we don't have to go after bids, if we, if we can't use the state bid to, to buy, use or, or to buy.
This is a new truck, yeah.
Well, it'll be a new, but it'll be two years old, two model years old, is that still qualified state bid?
I think so, sure.
If we can't, if we can't qualify state bid, then we need to, you think it is?
I think it is, I'll, I'll buy them regular.
Okay. Council, we have a motion, we have a motion that, uh, the clerk continued to work with Mr. Parker, see if minutes are available, if we can replace our current truck and move, and move it down to, uh, a backup. Is there a second to that motion?
All right, sir.
We have a motion, is there any discussion on the motion? Hey, Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Wives?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And the sheriff, she is.
I thought I had.
You got it. All right, Mr. Parker, you got something for us tonight?
Don't have anything at the moment.
Nothing, come on, darn right, Mr. Watson, hell.
Yeah, I'd like to mention something, uh, you know, on these streets that people have put out some debris, and, uh, that needs to be addressed, uh, cause, uh, it should be picked up. Uh, it sure make them streets look a lot better than they look now. And, and I don't understand why it hadn't been picked up, uh, you know.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make that, they call me sometimes.
I will put some work orders out to get the debris picked up.
Well, okay, don't, don't decide that's what you're gonna do yet, because I'm gonna talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, some more, no, no, you finish, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Now, I think, I think.
Back you, I'm gonna be your cheerleader.
Okay, good.
Okay, Ms. Carter?
Uh, the water trucks that come and fill up water two, three times a day over here. What, who are they and what they do with them and?
They're Anderson Columbia or Anderson Columbia Subs, we made a deal with them for milled asphalt that they get the water. When this is all said and done, and they get through with their water, they're gonna fix our streets where they messed them up from their trucks running on them. But that's what it is, we, when we get load of milled asphalt, I call them, they bring us triple more loads of milled asphalt for, and trade for water.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's what, that water back, that water.
I didn't get a call, I was just wondering, cause it's difficult by the asphalt.
That water that they get, we can't use, cause it's non-potable water, it's out of the well back here. Uh, but we, we track water and trade on it, you know, the county gets some, um, Anderson gets a lot, and their subcontractors get some, you know, and I think G three that's doing for the county, we, we gotta agree with the county too, you know, that will, they can get water, you know.
What they gonna do for us?
Well, it's hard to say right now, they used to do a lot for us, but they're, they've got sort of greed now. They don't wanna do that in France.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, it's actually because, uh, I was probably here, and you may have been, but I was probably here, this is happening, something. When we say we got an agreement, is that more than them just coming in and just saying, we'll do this, do we have that agreement in writing?
We have an email, I did everything in writing, with Bernard Davis, with Anderson, you know.
Nice guy.
Very nice guy, and we had an incident down at Mud Hill Road where a, one of the water trucks didn't know, and they filled up out of a hydrogen there. And he, he thrashed them down when I got to him. He said, I will find out who it is and they will not be back to do it, till they cut the pressure down up there, you know, for Mud Hill.
Well, that's not stable running out of meal too long, it's not the ideal thing, but it, it, once in a while, what it is good for is a turnout. You slow down and you turn out, you start driving, you kick it up, tear it up, only got to turn it on and off for the driveways. We all, we all do, get enough meal to fix every paper and then wash, and wash all, and sometimes, I said, don't just stay running out too long before you get some oil.
We get low, we call and use, find us some more. And it's about almost a thousand dollars a week now for a load of meals.
Yeah, so, that, that way of water is paying off pretty good. Anything else, Ms. Carter?
No.
That's it, okay, Ms. Wives?
I got a call this afternoon from Neil and Linda. And, um, their neighbor down on the corner, I don't know.
Couldn't you might?
Can't hear you, can't hear me. I don't know if you know, I don't know, but you can't hear me. It's on, um, but I got a call from them, and it was, I mean, they said it's been all day today. Maybe Jason could tell me, or give me an answer of what to tell them. Um, right there on the end of, right there, the end of Second Street, Jesse Taylor. They have red motorcycles, she called me this afternoon after I got off from work, and said that it's just been all day long, just rattling their trailer. And she asked me what to do about it, I told her, I didn't know, but I would ask somebody and, and get back with her and give her answer.
In that particular situation, are we sure it's his house, or is it two houses, one up on the hill?
It's not him, cause at first it was the issue with that one, that they were, I mean, to where they couldn't sleep. But this is like during the day, so I told her, I didn't know, I would have to ask.
Uh, just me trying to clarify for town, city limits at the sheriff's office point of view.
Mm-hmm.
Is that portion of her yard, in that yard, that one acre that's, is that inside the city town limits?
Yes.
Okay. My, my thoughts on it would be, one, check and see if he's doing it for personal, and then he falls under general noise ordinance, no different if he's out there playing the drums. If he is doing it for a business, if he's even doing it on the side, has him filled out the proper paperwork and got it approved through code enforcement, town enforcement, uh, for operating a business. Same as that young man that is on Second up the hill, I get complaints at the office about that, as well as, well as I can sit in my house and hear how the motor is doing. So I would look at the legal things as to whether or not he's got that paperwork. If he's just saying, no, I'm just out here shooting my boat under. Okay, well, then he falls under general noise ordinance, and we have to kind of treat it like everybody else, and these loud trucks going through town. We at the sheriff's office don't have decimal meters, but we do the best we can, um, as far as, there's a lot of other possible code violations there, and I know we're being careful, because enforcing on one, we gotta enforce on everybody. There, there may.
That's a good plan.
Unattended motor vehicles, there may be more than one visible or accessible, are there appliances in the yard that are, still have the doors and things on? Is, if he says, no, all this is scrap, do you have proper fixing? I mean, a salvage yard has to be fixed and shielded. There's a lot of the legal games that you can look at how the, the rules say you have to play. But we just have to remember, if we're enforcing on one corner of town, we have to enforce it on the other.
Okay.
If there's any, any such issues there, but from the sheriff's office standpoint, we'll be glad to assist in any way of several, well, I shouldn't say several, it's multiple employees that were, live in this town and we hear the same noises.
Right, I appreciate it.
I like that part about enforcing for everybody, I, I like that part.
Yes.
Um, so that I understand, he, he's talking, you talking about two places on the, on the? So that I understand, he, he's talking, you talking about two places on the other main street?
Both of them are on Second.
Um, the camper's at.
Miss, Jesse, look, there's, if you look on the land flat map, there's one acre where the camper is, in Miss Bernie's front yard, and that camper happens to be on that, and it's, it's in somebody else, her daughter's name. It's right there in that, right there on the edge of the property, then if you come,
Not the bridge.
East on Second, there's a concrete driveway, a bolt home up there, that young man, I've been given information about him, both of those gentlemen do the same type lifestyle.
Doing mechanics?
Or, yes, or various things, we, we, we're working the best we can, when you said his name, I was, we were just talking about him the other day, we had to kind of, he had been motivated to move somewhere else, and then we started meeting on that door, and now he's putting back, so I apologize for that.
Puts the time, puts the time expired, that, that he can live in, uh, camper trailer, or bolt home, or, uh, uh, non-active bolt home, is that time expired?
I'm sure.
Way back camper.
Yeah.
But like I said, if you enforce it on one, you're better than enforcing on all of them.
And you would have more here, I'm gonna tell you. Speaking for I know.
I mean, when I was on the phone with her, I mean, it was quiet the whole time, but whenever, just about the time I started to hang up, she was like, listen, and, I mean, you could just hear it. I mean, I could actually hear it sitting in my living room, over there where he's at.
Sitting on my patio. I agree with you.
That's, it's loud.
As I recall, a month ago, we had people in places of authority that said you can't enforce codes, did they not tell us that?
On homestead property?
Yeah.
That's not homestead property there.
Yeah, I would, I would look at the land flat map, that one particular spot.
I'm, I'm, in my opinion, we spend enough, we use if we pass ordinances or laws or anything, it can't be enforced. And Mr. Parker brought along lists of places in here, and we've added to that probably a, a few since he brought them in here, and, uh.
It can't be enforced, yeah.
Well.
I love my homestead.
Until we, until we write those letters, we might not know, now, now, I think what he said, and I, I wish Mr. Carter was here, so if I'm wrong on this, I'm, I'm just wrong. But I recall some times that we had some thinking, you can't enforce against homestead, the only thing about it is, you can't collect on that until that changes hands. If, uh, can I use you, Ms. Judy, for an illustration, to say you had one of these violations we're talking about, on your homestead property? If you live thirty more years, you, we can't do anything to put a lien against it, if the high sisters, or your family sells, that you would collect the lien before they, they get the lien, or if you set it in, in five years, we get the money. But we can't, we can't foreclose and get the property, as long as it's homestead, I, I think that's, I think that's the, the right thing, but, uh.
If it's homestead, you can't fore, foreclose anywhere, right?
You can't foreclose on it, but you can put a lien against it, and you know what, if you, if you put a lien against my homestead, you probably gonna frighten me just enough, I'm gonna go buy a rake and a shovel and, and, uh, start, start cleaning up a little bit.
And then we take the lien off of you?
Well, you could, yeah, it satisfies the lien.
Yeah.
But it, it's bothered me that over the years, we've, we've, it, it was the same thing with dogs, we'd write letters, and write letters, and write letters. They shut up the dog for a while, they cleaned up the yard for a while, and then the same by letters, again, we had to start back on first base, writing letters again. I want to get to the point where, where, uh, I, I'll use me, I won't talk about Ms. Judy anymore, if I'm in violation, if I'm in violation, and you write me a letter, and I'm supposed to clean it up, and I'm like that, and I cleaned it up just before Jason comes and gets me, but by the time he drove out of driveway, I, I made it again, I don't should have started with letters again, just, then terminate it, come on back and get me, I, that would be some work that we don't have to start over every time.
That would be nice, but. I haven't found a way to fight you.
So if it, if they're not homestead, if we do one, can we go ahead and do the other ones?
Essentially.
I mean, to at least get something started, even if it get, you know, when one or two hears about it, it, it goes, it, you know, it starts moving, it throws off.
Could be, it could be, you could.
You know, anything to.
We've always thought if, if we make one case, one example, that others would, would do that. I think that worked a little bit with the dogs, I don't think it's stayed work, you get out here now, and you got dogs and cats and.
We don't have any complaints, right?
No, no, it's just better now.
It's better than ever being right now.
I don't think that I.
The agreement with the county is doing good on the dogs.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I don't think that I know what to do about your, about the motorcycle noise, or racing motors, or whatever, and I don't know, that I know, or even think what to do. But, could we, could we?
Hey, I just got the answer, I just got the answer, Jason said, call sheriff's department.
Yeah, would you do that?
We're not gonna promise that we can solve the problem, but as you said, sometimes when you see something, sometimes you make a change, and certain people don't like to see us at their door for any reason.
Yeah, don't like you, partner, you're gonna do that, yeah, let's, let's do, let's do that for your immediate name, and with the council, uh, uh, we, we have, we, we have an attorney, and I think we have a good attorney, but, but I'd, I'd like for him to review the portion of the codes that we follow, with Washington planning, and that was everything like that, and, and maybe, does it come back in December, January?
December, December.
And I for him to give us a plan of action on things that we can do, uh, and, and then, let's do that, is that? Is all right, if we put him on the agenda, not just, he's here to, but he's here, and he comes with something to tell us, is that okay? Because, because, did you have anything else, Mr. Parker?
No.
The thing I was gonna, T, I was gonna be your, your partner in, is on Monroe Street, there's one complete traffic lane that's closed over there. There's three vehicles that times, two all, all time, three times, now, come out that way the other day, went and looked at the new cover repaired that we had down there, and I, and I turned it that way, and one of them, it wasn't sitting in, it wasn't sitting, flowing with the traffic lane, it looked like it had come in and just turned, they've sent, they've sent sideways in the traffic lane, uh.
Mr. Hagg, you may ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Would you like the sheriff's office to assist the town of Walsall in a vehicle parked in the roadway, and abandon vehicles and motorcycles?
You, you sure would, you wouldn't know how to.
I'll take care of that in the morning.
You know, you know the street?
Oh, I know the street. Again, those are doors that knock on the door.
I'm sure you know.
I, I, I drive by there, and I, I often wondered why I hadn't got the call, but it's just cause people don't go by there very much, but I can, that's a, that's a city street, that's a town street, that's a violation of Florida statute.
Well, and it could be a hazard if we had to go fire at that particular residence itself, we can't get, we can't get to their.
I know firsthand, I couldn't get by there after two vehicles pulled up, and we was doing a search for them. I had a little trouble myself, I had to go around the block, couldn't get my duty assignment, cause it was blocked, so. I, I will address that in the morning.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, that was my suggestion to the clerk, but, thank you, that, that's what we.
May take me seventy-two hours by law.
I said, that's what we would like from him to do, can I speak to the council? Okay, that's what we'd like.
It, I'm just letting, it may take me seventy-two hours by law, after I post a little red sticker on the window.
I understand, if you do it, three, four days. Okay, uh, the other thing that I had Steve answered, the gator is still waiting on parts, and then the last thing that I have is, uh, our house opening, we're gonna use it for Christmas, but when are we gonna use it for fire?
We, as you see, the USDA funding resolution is still not on the agenda, I talked with them this week and last week, we're holding on Washington to this thing. As soon as they send the closing orders down, the money will be here within seven to ten days, but we're waiting on them to send the closing orders down to the attorneys. And then you and I will meet with attorneys, and then we will sign documents, and then we will have money, and they will be opening.
Okay.
And if anyway, you can.
We've already approved all that, we don't have to call a meeting.
No, sir, it's already approved, everything, we're just waiting on Washington, uh, this is what we're waiting on.
Well, Mr. Biden said that we don't understand the supply chain. I believe, I believe I understand a little bit, that it took a long time for the supply. That's the last thing I have, Madam Clerk, do you have anything else? No, anyone on the council have anything else, anyone in the audience that did not sign?
This is all key, we're closed next week, but I suggest that we bring a couple of bleachers down for the tree line, give people somewhere to sit.
Well, that would be great, but if we had the vendors out there in time, so the development clubs.
We can put the bleachers in there, and vendors, they'll have to do around.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I ain't gonna wait for the vendors to put the bleachers down, we're talking about next Friday, we'll set the bleachers down there, then when the vendors come Saturday, they'll have to deal with it.
Okay.
But there's a lot of people gonna be coming here, and they all gonna have to stand, sit on the ground.
You're talking about for the tree line?
Yes, sir, and it won't take us for a few minutes to grab a couple of bleachers, put on trailer.
Next, next Friday night.
Next Saturday night, five, three, five o'clock, I gotta carry to you what time it is, it is.
One to five.
One to five is the bazaars, one's at three, and then the tree line is at five, yeah.
Next Saturday, right?
Next Saturday.
Does the fire department say anything about their annual?
It's gonna be the eleventh, no, it's gonna be the eleventh.
Yeah.
And that is one thing, the development club would like to have, maybe at our next workshop, they would like to be involved with the council, to move our Christmas, and the tree line, and everything to one day. Like, if we have the Christmas parade the Saturday after Christmas, that's five, you know?
After Christmas.
It's been a long day.
I have a lot of bank here.
Yeah, it's all been one day.
Yeah, they wanna work together, have everything in one day, you know, and that would work for us, I think, yeah.
We'll listen to their proposal.
That's right.
When would it be, when be the?
Saturday after Thanksgiving.
This is in the future, this is not, this is not this year.
No, it's gonna be the eleventh, it's Christmas parade this year, December eleventh.
And the fire department super is that.
At night, yes.
If y'all have never been to one of those, you need to get it.
Need to go, baby.
Any, anybody else in the, in the audience, okay, we want to recess, this meeting is now six o'clock, we want to recess the meeting, and, uh, and, and go into a, I guess it's like a workshop, and, uh, we want to interview candidates, uh, I see that, uh, at least four of our candidates are here already, and, uh, we will, we will begin, we have an order for them, I think.
I do, yes.
Okay. Uh, let me, let me, let me say to the four of you, and when our other candidate comes, when we start to interview him, we can have to say this again, uh, what am I supposed to read, where does it say that?
Oh, I just say, this is box one for everybody.
Okay, all right, so that all of you know, uh, uh, the pre, the, if you're selected tonight, the pre-employment requirements are these, you have to do each of these. Uh, there's background check, and a driver's license check, a pre-employment physical, a drug test and screen, six months probationary period, if you're, uh, selected, and benefits will begin after six months. Those benefits includes retirement, with the Florida retirement system, and accrued annual sick leave on a schedule that's established by the city council. Do, do you, any of you have a question about the, these will be the requirements, or, and the expectations, if you're the selected candidate, does anybody have a question about that? Okay, all right, how are they, how are they ranked, I mean, how are they, by time?
Harry Ferguson at six.
Okay.
The dollars is sixty-four.
Okay.
Miami family at six-four. Charles on six-four.
Okay.
Miami six-four five, and Charles at seven.
Okay, all right, we have a fifteen minute, fifteen minute increments, uh, and because this is a public meeting, you are all welcome to stay while we interview each of you, and welcome to leave, if you don't want to hear what we talked with others about, we're gonna go do about the same thing, but, uh, with that said, Mr. Ferguson, would you like to? I'll bring a, I'll bring a chair. A chair, yes. Bring your chair over here.
I'm standing.
Well, if we get you all in place, then we can get you on tape, and that way, nobody's gonna have any questions later. Does everyone have either or, uh, or, either or both, your, uh, applications and the qualifications for the job, for these? Okay, each of you have, uh, or should have, a copy of, uh, of the proposed interview questions, we got more of these from the HR office, they are, they are, uh, used by the county HR office, and, okay, we are not mimicking to these questions, you can, there's a candidate that you want to know more about, uh, their experience, da, 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 uh, you can ask them questions, it's not on these, not on these, uh, not on this, uh, sample questions, okay? How do we, how do we want to do this, who wants to initiate? Well, David, this is so formal, I know, but tell us something about yourself, we'll start it then.
About what, qualifications?
Qualifications, your experience, uh, anything that you might have placed on, on your, uh,
I've pretty much been.
What is a good application?
I've pretty much been in construction my whole life, you know, I know plumbing, electric, drywall, all of it, pretty much, I've done just about every one of them, I was builder for twenty-five years, so, the state can judge me. There's just not too much of it that I have not done, concrete or roofing, it doesn't matter, I've, I've done about every bit of sewer lines, water lines. Lot of that I did here.
Absolutely.
How long did you work in Kentucky during that?
Twenty, I, I'm from Kentucky originally, and I started out at a very young age, uh, matter of fact, I started out in, uh, probably first, pretty much, job I really had was taking care of a nursing home, which was my godmother's. I did all the maintenance on the building, took care of all of it, you know, as a kid. But I've done most of it.
Okay, anyone, anyone with a future, uh, and we can, we can ask these, these standard questions, I don't know how much sometimes, I don't think they tell us about what we're looking for, but we can ask those, and if the candidates respond, or you can ask them questions.
So on your hours, um, you got twenty, can you actually work twenty-eight of that, or?
I can, yes. But that's what I originally was told, that's why I put twenty out.
How long were you here before, David?
Uh.
How long?
Well, I was here as a, I guess you'd call me a contracting employee for the first, about the first six months. Is that right, Margaret?
A year. It's about a year.
A year.
Yeah, I think about a whole year.
As a contract employee.
Thank you, Mr. Bobbly.
And then, uh, I worked here as an employee. Two years, sir. Two years as an employee and, and a year as a contract employee. A total of three.
Three years.
What's your reason to become this job?
Well, I had the job. I retired and I'm really not ready to completely retire.
It's not what you think it is, is it?
Oh, it is. So, I, I'd like to come back, yes.
How close are you to social security? You already have it?
I have it.
You already have it? Okay.
I have it. That's why I'm in the board comprehensive.
Well, that's good to know.
How are you?
Supplement.
How, how are you in, uh, or how do you feel like you would fit here, uh, having once been the person and now you're going to be, uh, the, the part-time? How, how are you in taking orders from supervisors or being supervised by?
I have no problem with it.
Someone else?
I have no problem with it. I've met Tim, I've talked to him. We get along great. The new fellow.
Again, this is so formal, but, but things, things that we discuss or have people ask us or things that we need to know about. How are you, how would you be in keeping records and cement those records in a timely fashion? And, and, and completing them accurately and, and completing, completing them?
As well as I can, you know. I, I have no problem with it.
Okay. I know, I, I know there was, that did not happen before. Uh, your, your records was incomplete. I talked to you about it a few times and your records would be incomplete. And, uh, uh, job requests and all like that will not be turned back and be, be completed.
Uh, I don't know what you're talking about, but, uh, I filled out a timesheet every day and put on there what I did. And, uh, any work order that I had, I signed off on and turned in to Margaret.
Well, uh, the, uh, the daily activity record, you say, uh, mowed for hours or you say worked four lines for hours. Best place out there says, how many pieces of pipe did you use? What, what material did you use? Where did the asphalt go? Where did you put that? That wasn't on those records. I, I looked at it.
There was no place to put all that. I told you that when we talked about it once before. There was no room to put all of that. We, me and you had talked about that once before.
Well.
I said I don't put on, on the day.
They plenty of notebook paper in the office.
Well.
You just indicated to me that you, that you didn't do that.
No. I only done what I was told to do when I first started, was fill out a timesheet, my daily stuff that I did, and that's what I done.
Was the, was the records we had at that time, the place for materials and stuff like that, it's used?
No. I never had nothing like that.
I can go get a sheet and see what's on it.
Are they different from the ones that Tim's using now?
Yes, sir, his time.
We have those in our, we have those in our notebook. Is that the kind of timesheet you turned in out there?
Yeah.
There are such materials, equipment, what time, where, where did you work, what was the task?
No, I did not fill that out.
You're right.
No, I did not. But I will. I mean, I didn't, I don't know that I could fit it all in there, you know.
Used two pages?
I do a lot of stuff and I did a lot of stuff in daytime here.
Used two pages? I guess if you will, my question is why you did it?
I, I didn't, I thought you were gonna make me a new timesheet. We talked, me and you talked about that. You said we'll make something with more room on it. It never happened.
Uh, timesheets are kept in your office. Timesheets and this are two different things.
No, we use a, we use a sign.
Okay. And again, I'm the only one here that thinks that time blocks are a good thing, but if we had time blocks, we, we never never punished. In and out. And I think this council expressed to you that those things that you did do, you did well. Uh, you kept our, you kept our D C on second street clean, free running. You did, you did a lot of working over there and, uh.
Yes, sir.
What you did do, you did well.
And I will continue to do well. I'm not, this is doing if you're not gonna do it right, you know.
Anybody else have a question? Now, we got questions. Whether we asking them or not, folks, we, we got, I mean, we got to be the.
How do you feel about getting up in the middle of the night and going and working hard?
I have no problem with it.
Fossett or whatever it is.
I have no problem with it.
Water line.
Never did. Never did.
I remember also that you would say that you didn't have enough to do, you wanted less hours and some things like that. And for instance, we got a fence over here runs over that George Rogers Park, but you can't even see the fence. It had been cut back for so long, you can't even hardly see that there's a fence in there. I, I think, I think there's more to do here than, than what you perceive, you know, and just.
And, uh, George Rogers Park, I had that place cleaned up nice out there. It was probably nicer when I was here than it had been in years. Cause Carol West here mentioned that to me, how bad it looked. And I was, went out there and cleaned it all up. And it looks bad again, but it, it did when I was here. Cause I mowed inside the ponds, inside that pond, I cleaned out all, everything out there. I mean, that place was nice.
I know just the, when, about the time Tim started, Tim took me out there and I knew that that gate that was pitched back against the thing, you couldn't even, you couldn't pull it out. I mean, you just.
It really did.
Yeah.
But that happened after, that was all fitted out to another outfit. That had nothing to do with me then. They let it grow up, but I mean, it wasn't like that when I was here.
Your salary you got down here, is this twenty, twenty an hour?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you lived in April?
I believe so, yeah.
April, yeah.
You lived in April? I, I don't know, I don't hardly know, do a fine or weed and grew that much for that lip like this, David. It's just.
Roger Dell, I'm telling you, when I left here, and Margaret, you know, you drive by it every day, you know what I did to that park. It was clean when I left, when I, but it was long before I left, before when they took over the park. That's when I left here, but they, they had taken over the park maintenance the year before that.
And was for any, was, was they doing anything but mowing?
They, uh, we went to recreation for the maintenance of the parks, is what it was, mowing and maintenance.
Okay. Okay. That was even our unit project. And then when did we know about who it was before now? This is not the first time I have been discussed out there and, and related, they can speed if it, if they were a goose. When did we know before now? Or when did we have somebody to do it?
Well, it was probably, uh.
It was probably.
Yeah, Miss Carol probably did, uh. At work, at a meeting.
But all that stuff done.
Alright. Well, it was done, it was done.
It was being cleaned, it was what, what, what happened. It had been being go, they had been going over there cutting it and cleaning it. And then they, I guess they just kind of, she slapped off or whatever. And I happened to go over there, cause I go over there every weekend and I'm locking lock that gate on Saturday and Sunday. Because I volunteered to do that. And, um, now, I mean, whenever I was going over there and we changed, was going, Tim got, uh, they got new, uh, locks and all that to go on there. But Ashley was going over there cutting. They were doing great. She kind of slapped off. And when she slapped off, then, uh, that's when I brought it up at the meeting that things were starting to grow up over there. And it was starting to look bad. I don't remember if there was a meeting or a workshop that I brought it.
And they, and they, uh, it was contracted out for a year?
No, it was not contracted out.
Or it was, it was moved?
To recreation.
For a year?
Yes, it was Steve's responsibility.
For how long?
Uh, it was for a fiscal year because it started, uh, he started getting the salary for it in twenty. And he just quit, didn't get the salary for it this year. And this past budget year, he's cut down that good. When Tim came on board.
He didn't, he didn't do it in the summer of twenty twenty, did he? He just done this, this past year.
Might have been this past year, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But the gates, they, they would be in lock.
No.
Yeah.
The summer of twenty twenties, when I cleared it up.
Yeah, twenty twenty lock state.
And I mean, they navigated on the front. I fixed the gate.
That's what I'm saying. Twenty twenty, this is twenty twenty-one. That's one year. And they still go and add fences because my army didn't grow there in one year now.
Cause that one, that one gate that was pulled back, that was all just grown up. It, I think it did.
And where, and behind the, behind the concession standing? Has anyone been out lately and walked that fence line, lived through that fence line?
I go every Saturday and every Sunday.
And how, how deep into the year? You walk behind?
I, I drive all the way up, all the way past the concession standing, come all the way back down.
And is it still, is it still rooted?
It's, no, it looks good out there. It really does. It looks good out there now. Cause I go out there every weekend.
You could, when I, I.
They just simply started things.
You could have given that.
I was so dead.
It was so grown up and thick.
That's, that's exactly right. I don't think we're talking, we're talking.
We're talking about the fence line and say.
Yeah, going, going up there.
And it goes across. And that was a trailer, so where you walk in that fence line?
I ain't going back over there where the trailers is at.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't go that far.
I cut tree limbs out of that. I don't know which one you're talking about. I cut tree limbs out of that thing and grow way over. I mowed weed up the edges of that, that fence row.
Is this gonna be full-time or part-time?
Part-time. Twenty-eight hours a week?
Twenty-eight. About five thousand three, church is there?
It's also designed, okay.
If you're selected and you have an excellent application, if you're selected, I just want you to know, uh, we, I, and, and it may be just for one year. Do I run a next year?
Yeah.
I think it may not be good for one more year, but when we have quarterly workshops, and you're asked to come, I would expect you to be here. We didn't have that before. Uh, if we need reports filled out, I would expect them to be filled out. I would expect you to work for five people. Equally, and, and things like that. And, uh, inventory of tools and those kind of things. Not your responsibility, it's primarily. But if Tim assigns you these wherever you'd go, mowing or whatever it is that particular, this is not just a, this is just not a, uh, a lawn manger. This is not just a weed eater and, and lawn mowing job. It's assistant, assistant maintenance person. It may be what you said, electric carpenter and some other things, you know, what we got going on. And, and you're good with that.
It's just like it was on it before or everything, whatever needed.
Yeah. Sometimes I feel like you evaded the questions.
No, I'm not.
Well, that's perception, that's perception, you know. And if I'm not honest with you, you won't know how to respond to that. That's, that's why I'm getting at it.
Right.
This is not accusations. It's not literally anything. It's just, if I don't tell you, you won't know.
That's exactly right.
Well, now, does Tim have to fill out a, uh, I guess not, a timesheet?
Daily worksheet, yes.
A daily worksheet. Is he gonna have to fill out a daily worksheet? Just I'll just use him as an example when he's here, telling him what to do. You go spend, you go clean George Rogers Park. Is Tim gonna have that responsibility?
Of making his assignments?
Yes.
You know, uh, I would think so, uh. Tim did.
Is he gonna have to write it down?
Oh, get him written, give him a job.
To be accountable.
That's a good question. And I would think that he or Margaret one would, would need to give whomever a, a job.
Well, I would think it would need to come from Tim. That way you would just have one person there.
That's right, his supervisor.
Yeah, I would, I would want to Tim, Tim would be whoever.
Yeah, I would think that David will not have to come to Margaret, wouldn't even have to come to Bill. Now, you know, just, that's kind of facetious, but, uh, his instructions ought to come to, from Tim. And any problems that he has ought to come to Tim before they come to us or to Margaret or the, whoever the universe might be or anything like that. That's, that's what I think if Tim's gonna be the supervisor. He needs to, he needs to shoulder that load and he needs to, he needs to act in that load. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I agree with him. Is that the way you perceive the job?
Yes, I think that's the way it should go. And I would like hand my paperwork back to him and him handing it.
Right, right. I agree with that, I agree with that, I agree with that.
And at that point, like he did it. Suppose you gotta work order this morning, this afternoon, he turns it back in to Tim. Well, it's Tim's responsibility to contemplate and so for it, just as clients, to make sure that he did all these things, fill out the material, fill, form out correctly.
Fill out what he, and I agree with that as well. I agree with that as well. Do we all agree with that? This is not just Roger's junior show here. Does everybody agree with that? That, that goes from Tim to David, from David back to Tim, and then ultimately to the office supervisor. Alright. David, I will have one last thing and, and I, and I need to discuss it with you because it's in, it's in my heart, it's there. When you left us before, you said if you could ever help us, you would. You had the opportunity to help us and you said I don't work for the city of Washington anymore. You didn't help us.
Well, now wait a minute. I did help you. I went up and looked at the back over there for Margaret. She called me. It was up there in front of the lodge, the leaky.
Yeah. I think Roger's talking about the night that the system went down with the lightning strike.
I wasn't here. I was not here when it happened. I was in town.
That wasn't what I was talking about.
And I went the next day, the next morning, I went up there and I talked to Tim. He met, he was up there. And I told him, I said, he was wanting to get down in that water. And I said, you can't get in that water. I said, that current will swish, wash you away. You can't get down there and fix that. I said, you're gonna have to run the line up above the ground, get back there and tap into that. I said, currents are way too strong. You can't get in that and work on that.
Bet I asked.
I bet I wronged.
Now I know part two, or the, or all Margaret says the rest of the story. Okay.
Yes, I sure did. And I told Tim, Tim, if you need me for anything, told him two or three different hours, I'll talk to him. If you ever need me, ask me and I'll be there.
Well, what if a citizen of Washington asks you to do something, what would you do?
Excuse me?
If, if a citizen of the town asks you what, to do something for them, what would you do?
On the job or off?
On the job.
I would do it. If it was approved. If it's approved. And that's what I used to. And that's what I used to always do to people. I don't mind doing it, but I gotta get approval first.
I don't have any other questions. Mr. Carter, I've had it, Mr. Carter?
I'm good.
Mr. Wolfson, I don't want him to waste. We appreciate you taking the time to be interviewed and to take the time to cut out the application. And it is a very good looking application.
Thank you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Mr. Dallas.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter. May, cancel, how you doing?
Good.
Tim, all right?
Yes, doing good, good.
Okay. Let's, uh. Somebody else want to say, that lead, I'm not sure that I did such good, I don't think I, I felt like, I don't think I felt like I was more confrontational than I meant to be. But, but there's no.
I didn't do it.
There's no, there's no reason for us to talk about the thing.
She's been involved in this too long, I didn't do it.
No reason for us to talk about things we're unhappy about and then not let, let her know or get answers to our questions.
You didn't sound confrontational. You sounded factual.
Well. You don't want to make enemies while you're there, you can always, everybody's know what enemies for sure, and I don't have to be answering any of them.
A long ago, we got on you.
We asked you very few of these questions, did we? I don't know, I asked you many of them.
You want me to bring him back? You want me to bring him back?
Gee, you don't need to bring him back.
Don't be hitting it, speed down.
Dad, you don't have any problem working twenty eight hours a week, do you?
No, sir, forty, fifty.
And insurance will be up to you, if you can get insurance, if you wanted, it'll be up to you.
Will you, Dennis, will you need to get insurance? Will that be a, or something?
Yeah, I will, yeah, we can look at that one.
Okay, I mean, you, you already have insurance, right?
Well, not really.
Oh, you got.
That's right, I ain't got none, I mean.
Okay, I didn't know.
I mean, we, yeah, and I, you know, we can talk about that, you know.
How long have you been retired, it makes you.
Oh, five years.
Five years, so there's a conflict with your re-employment?
No, no, no. No, y'all, and I, I just, you know, I think I'd have to see you a little bit, you know, here and there, uh, just things I see, you know, but.
You heard.
I live a little down Wausau, you know.
You heard the pre-qualifications, do you have a problem with the physical or drug test, uh, background check, or I would like to see if there's any of those things, that the pre-qualifications that.
No.
Would cause you a concern?
No, sir.
How do you feel, Tim, Tim is, Tim is probably new as a. And it would certainly be you as a supervisor, he's got a lot of work experience, this perhaps, and those things I've asked him to do, he's done, it seems like he's done good. Would that, I know that you were supervisor, I know that you were supervisor for many, many years.
For several years, for fifteen years.
Sometimes stepping back from a supervisor to.
No, sir, I, I, and I love to work, and I drove it for my, uh, somebody else told me what to do for a while, you know. Beside my wife.
So, wait, I remember, would you like to blame it on me?
Would you, you gotta blame it on something, that's why.
You know, Dennis, we all love Wausau, I do, I wouldn't be here probably if I didn't.
Yeah, sure, I understand.
But, uh, you know, I don't think people, I think people ought to be able to go around and look and not have, not follow somebody's directions.
Right.
To look and see what needs to be done, and I think you, any person we hire would be a help to Timothy because.
Right.
Me and Carol took him all through Wausau, we showed him what he's supposed to do.
That boy was doing fine, yeah.
And you know, he, I think he needs help, to be honest with you, that's my personal feeling.
The first week he was here. You can, you can see my business, you know, you can tell.
Yeah, people gotta learn, I mean, but I don't think anybody that's fierce would.
I would have no problem, anything you tell me to do, that's what I, that's, you know, if I hired on somewhere, that's what I was there to do, you know, for what pay.
Do y'all think probably the biggest, the biggest running curve that Timothy had or Dennis or anybody else is going to have is running the water system?
Right, and I know, I know some of it, you know, and what the boundaries and what it goes to and all, you know, some of it, but now I don't know all of it. I do know some of it.
I think we have discovered.
Just working here, you know, working for the county for years and, and being on council for fifteen years.
I think we've discovered, about the time Timothy come on, we had lots and lots of breakdowns. And I think we, one of the things we've discovered is that our ass-built plans are not what they should be.
They don't cover a lot of things.
I know, uh, Jim, Jim was, it started, it actually started when Jimbo was here. Down inside the ballpark, you know, we had hoes all up down.
Yeah, yeah, Jimbo, he had the time.
Once that plant said it was cut off by a pier, and once they did, it was, well, there's over here, I found out it was actually over here along another line. And one line that we thought was dead for years and years and still charged, but it was kept, y'all remember all that? And, and Mr. Richard, Jimbo liked it.
Oh, and when you run into something like that, and you just got, you got to figure it out.
You got backup.
You know, backup.
Traveling there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tim has had a rough. Five months.
He done a lot of shit, he's been. Yeah, he is strong.
But he's treated, he answered the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's done real good, I, I think y'all got a good well there, you know.
And you're familiar with all the equipment, so lawn mowers, backhoes and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, ma'am. I've run, I've run a few lawn mowers and a couple of backhoes.
One of the things we didn't mention to David, but I, I want to assume that his experience will tell him that, that on the, on the advertising, I think it says. Anything else that you might be asked to do sort of thing, anything that you supervise, so, uh. What I'm concerned about that, as with anybody else we might interview, is that they say, hey, I mow yards, I don't fix lawn mowers, I don't.
No, sir.
I don't, uh. You know, I move, I move, I move right away. Sure that everybody can understand that this is a system to Tim. The primary, the primary focus might be our roads and acres and shoulders, I think we won't have, but, uh, it could be any, anything else. It, do, is that, that's my understanding, is that what y'all think?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have no problem with that, no.
Tell us why we shouldn't hurry, that's a.
Why you shouldn't hurry?
That's an unusual question.
Well. Why you shouldn't hurry? Yeah, cause now, I love to take a nap about dinner time. I've got pretty used to it.
Sorry, we're gonna do that.
Why you shouldn't hurry?
Yeah. It's all right, if you can't think of it, I used to ask that question, uh, why, why wouldn't you be better than anybody else who was thinking that? And a lot of folks gave their good location, but then, you're, you know, if you got a weakness or not, and I might not know what that is.
Politics.
Politics.
Why we don't say? Which I'm used to that.
Well, I think our politics is worse than. It's got, it's got a few of those, you're lucky.
We don't have.
The thing is, it might get, it might get a good council, so, you know, y'all would, y'all would do good.
For Roger, yeah.
I am a more.
Am I, am I missing?
No, we've, we've got a very good council now, we've had a rough.
He said I'm missing something?
We've had a rough couple of years, but we, we've got a very good council.
Sure do.
Can you feel my day, as you usually, when I'm trying to?
I, and this job does make huge.
I think we work together as good as any I have ever worked with, we've had some other good ones, but this is good. Any questions, Mr. Wolfson, ma'am?
No, I sure, no, I don't have none.
It's Wes.
I don't have any.
I don't have any. Mr. Carter? We didn't ask you before today, but do you have questions? It's close to saying to a town manager that we have.
As long as they come out, I'm, I'm good. And I don't call you unless I have to, well, Dallas, I went and got Dallas before.
You got me a bad beat, you're, you're a bitch, dog.
I went to, we took one more talking to that night, didn't we?
Yeah.
Dallas said, we gonna have to take this, I said.
You want you?
We was good. She talking bad to us that morning.
Yes, some ladies will talk bad to you, not the dogs, sure the yard.
That's when Alan was here, and after a certain time of evening, you didn't want to go get Alan, you know, so I thought they'd get Dallas.
He might have pretty much been around.
He was unavailable after, after five.
Anything, anything you would need to ask us?
No, sir, I'm not, um.
It pays fourteen dollars an hour for twenty, pays only fourteen dollars an hour for twenty eight hours a week.
I'm good with that.
Would you be dependable?
I promise you, I'll be dependable, huh?
I said, are you gonna work a day and lay out the day?
No, I, I used to be good with that, so, I'm pretty good about showing that.
Have a lot of time, man.
And do you swap sides of the fence a little?
Maybe when you get straight, when he's been retired, five years, she might make sure that he's gonna stick with it.
Sure, I guarantee you, it seems, hard to talk to you and be grown, probably, but.
What, I, I've got the wrong application. Background, I believe you told me one time that the county's only job you had after.
It is, it's almost, almost the job I've had.
After you finished high school.
It was. Just played there, right at thirty six year.
That's like long, she said, uh, school was thirty four years, I hope she'd stay here.
You got a good record.
Yeah.
Thirty six is what I had. Okay, anybody else have anything for Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter, you have anything else for us?
I sure don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, I thank you for coming, thank you for putting out an application.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGovern?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm assuming that's you, we haven't formally met, but.
Yes, sir.
I know the man is under the table, so I'm thinking it must be you.
See y'all.
Y'all have a blast tonight.
You too, bud.
Okay, Mr. McGovern, you for a.
I listed, I listed my last two jobs I had, uh, but I'm a jack of all trades and master of none, but. I do work on like small motors and stuff like that. I just rebuilt the transmissions for my cars.
So you have some technical experiences that we might or may not find on here, is that what you're saying to us?
Yeah, uh, it, it listed like, it told me it listed the last two jobs I've had, so that's what I do.
Oh, you heard the background, or the pre-fulfillment, the background check, driver license check, pre-fulfillment, physical, drug test. Those are the requirements, and then others will benefit, I can read those, I can read any of the requirements, the job, uh, what I just said, drug test, the physical, et cetera. Do you have a problem or any reason, time that you might not pass any of it?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Myself, uh, I got family here, I'm related to like the Goodman's, Riley's, uh, like through my stepdad, Bruce.
Ruthman?
Yes, sir.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know that.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I knew that.
I heard he was in there somewhere, but I didn't know where he was.
Yeah.
Um, but I stay like right over off of Cora in one of TB's rooms. And, like, I have a couple of kids, babies, uh, got a fiance. But, um, like me, I, I like cutting grass, uh, I like. I try to do everything I can to make y'all happy, like if the people ain't happy, I'm not happy. That's basically what the motto was.
Where do you work now?
I don't work, I'm unemployed right now, so.
And your last job was, uh, urban lane or?
Uh, no, it's double beaches.
Beaches, beaches, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever driven a backhoe?
Yes, ma'am. I've operated several, like front end motors.
Fleming electric, uh, carpentry, any steel, any steel, like that?
Yes, sir, I used to lay block, concrete, as a matter of fact, uh, we did this little, uh, split face building out here off to the side. Like a while back, it was like many years ago, me and one of my Jamaican friends.
Split building?
The little, uh, block building.
The well house?
Yes.
The old well house, yeah?
Oh, back to Seattle?
Yes, sir, we did that like back in two thousand and four.
Somewhere along there.
So I said it was twenty years ago. Okay, just, just tell us about yourself, tell us.
About myself, uh, I'm a hard worker, I try to stay, like, get the task done, um. Are you, like, uh, are you wanting me to tell you about my work experiences, like, or do you want my life cycle, or?
Yeah, this kind of thing.
Well, I, I'm from Kentucky, I moved here, was raised here, uh, by my stepdad and my mom. My mom passed away like, uh, two years ago on Mother's Day, or, yeah, I think it was. But, um, it's been really rough, I mean. It's just.
What do you see yourself five years from now?
Five years from now, uh, not retiring, no time soon, but, uh. I hope to see myself, uh, like, come out, like, the hole I'm in, like financially. Like, not struggling as bad, uh. I hope to see, like, if I get this job, I hope that I can, like, grow attached to, like, meet everybody's needs. Like, get it done, make Wausau look nice, like. Cause I know, I know there's some things around here that I do see that needs to be done, and.
You think you, you think you'll stay, it sounds like you think you'll stay with us, you're gonna be something with some progress.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wes, any questions? Mr. Wolfson, ma'am?
No.
Are you, uh, I, I like the question Mr. Carter asked a lot ago, and she may be gonna ask again. Chilling it, working, working regularly?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carter, any questions?
No.
And my phone's always on, so I'm able to answer it whenever I get a call.
Callouts are on, all up at night?
Yes, sir.
Rainy days, freezing days?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Timmy, Timmy was telling me about the time that, uh, the, like, we lost water or whatever, he said he was the only person out there and. I said, man, I said, I thought they had somebody else that would, uh, like, come walk you through everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Carter, any questions for? I don't have any, no. Do you have questions for us?
No, sir.
Do you understand the salary and?
Yes, sir.
The environment, something like that, so, no, we're talking twenty eight hours, are we talking four seven hour days, are we talking?
Four seven hours, yeah.
Okay, is that what we wanna do? Did, we, this come up a meeting or two ago, did we ever decide that, that is, is, uh, is our management group gonna go back to four hours, four days a week?
No, Tim, Tim's gonna be forty, five eighths of.
He's gonna be five eighths, but he'll be on Friday, maybe for one day, one day, one day a week, he'll be five seven.
Are we gonna days, make what days they work? Are we gonna days, make what days they work? If they work the twelfth, the fourth... The four days, you know, for twenty-eight hours, is it gonna be Monday through Thursday, or...
It's gonna be three Thursdays, yeah.
Or if they have to take off something?
They'll have to make it up on another day that week, you know, to take off the day that it'll be on Friday, you know, cause they want to get to, you know.
Okay.
I, I think we should decide. And the Thursday is kinda what some people do, but if we wanna make it Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we want him to be here Friday when David is here, we all can, because what I say is that, but... Uh, but the Thursday is kind of an accepted thing, but, uh... And once they begin to make leave time, they could, they wouldn't have to make it up. If they were calling first week, they wouldn't have to make it up on Friday, cause they'd have leave.
Something like that, go to the doctor, something on Monday, then they can come back work on Friday and make it up.
Yeah, right.
But once he gets leave, if he doesn't cover it all Monday, that's covered his time, but then he wouldn't work three days.
You're always gonna have vacations and leave, you know.
Yeah. You don't know.
But that's all after six months.
Mr. McGovern?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate, we appreciate you taking the time to fill out an application and have a nice interview.
Yes, sir.
When the, when the decision is made, it will notify the successful applicant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can start the order. I think this is your first year, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, maybe I'll be here first.
Whenever y'all need to hire, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir, y'all take care.
Yes, thank you.
Take care, you, sir.
Mr. Charles.
That lady mean, huh?
Well, that one got more.
Boy, I tell you what, I've been on the whip and toast before. How y'all doing?
Doing well, thank you for being...
Are y'all blessed?
We are. Thank you for being here tonight.
I, I'm blessed to be here. I just got off of work, I'm good and nasty, and I come on here.
We, we like working with you.
Hard work don't hurt you.
Uh, hard work never hurt nobody. I've been helping a lady remodeling her house.
You're the one that'll take a chance to be the first.
The lady lost her husband about eight weeks ago, and she's trying to get out of that house into another, and I've been remodeling.
You heard the, the, uh, the same thing as, as the others, the pre-employment requirements would be a background check, driver's license check, pre-employment physical and a drug test. Do you see some problem?
There ain't no problem.
Successfully completing any of those?
Uh, any attachment.
I guess we start with everybody else, tell us about yourself.
Well, let me see. I'm sixty-six years old. I work every day of the week.
I'm so sorry, I didn't tell anybody else. You don't have to tell us some personal things like your age.
No, I'm, I'm gonna go him.
We can't, we can't ask that question, and you're not required to tell us that.
Well, I'm ten out of ten, ain't we, no? I wish I could find some twenty-six-year-old that could work with me. But they're so hard-headed, they, they know it all, and I just, you know, ain't too much on that argument.
Yeah, okay, continue.
I did a little time in the, uh, in the military. I did my six years with National Guard. Wheel vehicle mechanic, uh, track recovery, bridge recovery, bulldozers, backhoes. You name whatever they had, I, I used it. Got into baller making, built power plants all over the United States. Pipe work. Uh, electrical, carpentry. I sure know how to use a steam, uh, steam engines. I've used a lot of shovels, uh... But, single. I've raised nine kids, they're all grown.
Bless you.
I worked hard to do all that, and I'm... I refuse to give up. I've, uh... I was cutting the grass over at Rogers Park. Uh, the dance road, it was a... It needs a chainsaw down the side of it, kinda like the cemetery was at one time. It, it got really rough there. Uh, a lot of the trees that had grown up there, they've been there for a while. I like your hedge out front out here, it looks good. It got trimmed down real good, uh...
Charles did it. Charles done the trimming.
And we practically watched this building, and for a while, I'd come through and I'd be looking for the city hall, and I couldn't find it. I said, "Where did the city hall go?" It was like somebody put a new building here. But it's always something to do, it's always. These ditches, they all need to be cut, weed eaten, cut, this, uh, debris. A dump trailer and a truck, and somebody just willing to pick it up and throw it over in there.
You got one there.
Haul it to a dump or haul it somewhere, because there's, there's lots of debris. There's vehicles sitting in roads. The officer there, he said he knew how to take care of that, but, uh, got a red tag. But, me, I work for, uh, Steve Hallmark on the weekends. I service trucks, change oil, do maintenance on them, uh, a mother of other things. He's like, "Well, have me go dig a ditch somewhere," you know.
Are you self-employed other than what you do for Steve? Self-employed, slacker, retired, semi-retired?
Semi-retired.
Piddling? I said piddling.
Piddling.
Well, it's worse than piddling.
Oh, is it?
Yes, ma'am, uh, I don't, I don't like it, but I like to tinker. But then I like, if I go to piddle at something, there's gotta be something I wanna make pretty. I wanna make it look good.
But, uh, should we not hire you?
Why, not hire me? Well, I'm old and I'm cranky. But I like to work by myself. I work with others, as long as they're not bunch, cause then you get argumentative. And I talked to Kimmy quite a bit. Kimmy's a good guy. Y'all, y'all have, y'all done something good there, you hired a good man. I, I came out and go put stuff in the dumpster, and there's stuff outside on the ground, then we throw it in the dumpster. But, uh, I've always kinda worked by myself, you know? Even when I was working baller makers, I, I worked up to eight hundred men at one time on, on a job. And keeping up with records, that was a mess. Cause you had to itemize each, each man. He worked four hours over here, then he worked four hours over here. He went from there, he went to the precipitator, you had to keep up with each individual. That way you could bill it out. Cause each department had, uh, separate buildings. But, yeah, if you hire me, all I can take is cemetery stuff is good. I'll get up there, I take pride in that, you know.
It does look good.
I, uh, I try to take a lot of personal pride in everything I do. I don't, I don't like, I don't like starting something and not finishing it. Pruition is, is everything.
Ms. Weiss, you have any questions for Mr. Wolfman?
My back's looking good, is yours?
Yeah, I actually went to the doctor today.
Praise God for today.
No, I don't mind. Mr. Carter?
How are you with working the backhoe and the equipment, stuff like that?
Backhoe's equipment, I can do anything except apply a helicopter. I tried that one time and crashed. But I work cranes and stuff like that, boom trucks, all of that. I've had a lot of, thirty years' experience as a baller maker.
In, included in that, if you work with, with Charles lines, uh, how would you be with our water, with our water system, would you?
I work with what they call cold water feed lines that you could drive Volkswagen through. Any, any kind of high-pressure lines, uh... All kinds of, uh, cold water feed lines. See, that, that big line, it was reduced down all the way to a six-inch line. I don't know what y'all got, six and eights?
Six and eight?
Six and eights. There wouldn't be any problem there.
Mr. Carter, uh, I'm sorry, more, more questions?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Carter? I don't have any. You have questions for us?
Not really. I hope y'all have...
You know the, you know the salary, the schedule, the benefits?
Yes, sir, I'm not worried with any of that. I, I've got insurance, and we, we all good on that.
And you started by the first of the year?
I'd start in the morning if you wanted me to. I'm, I'm pretty versatile on, on working.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Wolfman? Thank you for coming, and...
Well, you most well.
When we make a decision, Mr. Carter will let the successful candidate know, and...
Okay.
Start... Thank you, y'all.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you.
Y'all...
Thank you.
Y'all have a very blessed night.
You too. I too, thank you. Trevor?
All right. I think I'm gonna say a little bit less than the last guy.
Everyone else chose to come in at the same time earlier, so you didn't hear this, so I need to tell you.
Okay.
Uh, we told this to everybody. Uh, the pre, pre-employment requirements are a background check and a driver's license check, pre-employment physical and a drug test. If you're selected as the candidate, uh, for the job, you'll serve a six-month probationary period, be released with or without cause. Uh, benefits begin after six months. Those benefits include a re, sort of retirement system, retirement account, and second annual leave after six months. Okay?
I combined all that.
Okay. Okay, as everyone else did, tell us, tell us about yourself.
Okay, let's see, um, mostly just, um, looking for work, and I try to keep a good attitude no matter what, so... That's kinda my strength, and, uh, I'm willing to learn anything, so mostly just looking for work. Yeah.
And your work experience up until now?
I've worked at, uh, some food jobs and some, like, construction jobs, uh, laying brick and some sheetrock with Tom.
Okay, and for, for the purposes of, of, for record, Trevor is my nephew. If he's the selected candidate, I will be able to vote him, I have, but I can participate in this, so... As a matter of fact, if someone else wants to take the lead, leave these questions, or you're home, that would sort of be, be the truth, man.
How long have you lived in this area?
Probably like, uh, maybe twelve years now.
Isn't that long enough, though?
Right around, that's what's great, right around the corner, so...
How are you with working the heavy equipment?
I can do any of that stuff, um...
Getting training in?
I don't have a lot with the big equipment, but, you know, like I said, all that stuff I'm willing to learn and eager to even, so...
How good are you at following orders?
Very, very good. I just try to listen and do the best I can, especially if I'm gonna be getting paid, you know, so...
Yeah. Job loss. Could you service any of the equipment?
Yes.
Do you know anything about that?
Service, like repair work on it?
Same to all of them, servicing?
I can do that, yes, ma'am.
Which, which are the jobs, did you have to do to do that on? Or have you been a part of a service, service and equipment before?
Well, I've worked at Advance Auto and, um, trying to think of some others. I mean, it's kind of around the house stuff. I mean, especially if, you know, I would make sure that this is the right oil, I wouldn't just, you know, go for it without making sure. But there, I've had a lot of experience with stuff like that around the house. Not a lot, a lot, but enough to know, you know.
What safety precautions would you take when fueling or servicing a piece of equipment?
I'm sorry?
What are the basic safety precautions that you would take in fueling or servicing a piece of equipment?
Safety precautions? Fueling it, you say? Oh, that can be dangerous. You gotta make sure you use the right fuel and stuff, or I don't want any explosives or anything like that to happen. I think I would mostly just make sure I ask somebody to know what I'm doing, um, that's the best I can think to say there, cause I, I can't really think of many names of different, like gasoline and stuff right now, but... Or not gasoline, but, you know, different, um, oils or whatever you would use, and depending on what we're going to, uh, put it in.
Plumbing, electrical, carpentry. Working other words, working with, uh, if you call it out, for like ruptured water lines and, uh, the big, the big industry lines.
Yes, sir, I do not have much experience. I would, I worked at Rose Drilling Company, actually, water well drilling, uh, Tallahassee. We went, um, to Alabama to do a job there, and then I just went back home after that, so I stayed there maybe a month. But other than that, I don't have too much experience there.
Anybody else have a question? Ms. Weiss?
No.
Mr. Wolfman? No. Mr. Carter?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Carter?
Nah, alright.
Thank you for taking time to fill out an application.
Thank you.
And you for coming tonight for the interview.
Okay, thank you so much.
If, uh, you're the successful candidate, or whomever the successful candidate is, Mr. Wolfman will be a tip, and line up the physical and the starter dates and things like that, okay?
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern, thank you for coming. Okay, that's all from the candidates. And... I'm surprised we got five. Maybe you should be surprised that we didn't get more, everybody says they can't find a job. And of the ones we got, we got some pretty decent applications, I think. So what we need to do is decide if one of these, if somebody we would like to hire, or if we need to search further. We can talk about each one of them. I think I know every one of them personally. I think I know every one of them personally, except Mr. Montgomery. I think this is my first time that I've met him. Well, I know Bruce is a stepdad, but I didn't realize that was a connection. But we can talk about these, uh, we can talk about their applications, or liked, didn't like. I think with Mr. Montgomery, I'll flick him back quickly, I think his was the one. And, and Trevor, uh, so one of, one of them, one of the, actually, I may be thinking about our first, uh, application. Trevor maybe didn't want that. Lot of job change and, uh, and, uh, he said he had a lot of experience in lots of things and he don't get a lot of experience in among them doing anything. But, uh, the others, the others seems to have some pretty good credentials. Mr. Armstrong worked for Washington County in their maintenance department, in the road and bridge department. He's probably a very good mechanic. Uh, he left the county and went to, uh, in nineteen, probably seventy-eight or nine, and went into the natural garden, then come back and tell us he's been working on power plants and, and heavy, big construction all across the, all across the country.
I noticed he was wearing a, uh, bright thing around his wife's.
Yeah.
Something that has some back problems.
I think he's had some surgeries recently, yeah. Uh, his brother was in the first quarter course of class that was, uh, on Washington, local technical school, Washington Home Technical Technical Center. Ever had David Armstrong's his brother. You will know him.
I know David.
You know David, yeah.
And you do too?
I know. Yeah. Uh, he was in the first, uh, he and Wesley Sappert were in the first class that went through the quarter course of class. And, and he knows a lot. I don't think he went to that class, but he, he knows a lot about plants and all like that. Mr. Montgomery actually worked in a, apparently a nursery and someplace like that, so he would know something about plants. Problem is our plants, it's all on the ground, wrapped out low and, and it don't take a lot of hedging and things like that. We need, need, need moving. David, of course, we know his experience and, and to, to you, the council, if, uh, if my questions to him seem to have a order, uh, and he seemed to answer them very well and, and he defended himself, I think. If my questions sound like an accusation, he defended himself well. And I will make sure in the next couple of days that I see him and, and if he was offended in any way, I'll apologize. But if we don't ask the questions, we don't get them.
We don't know.
And when we have complaints, if we don't investigate that, we don't know how to respond to them. And, and when they set a caution that, they, they need to realize this is not a, this is not an argument session. This is a, this work, work things together session. And I, I, I hope I was not, but if I was, I apologize to you and I'll make sure that I do to him. So, so anybody, anybody got a suggestion, got a question? Want to ask a question of each other about who we might know or what we might know about them? Of course, Dennis is gonna be the most, uh, he's gonna be the most and best known of all those having been raised here, if I get. And I don't know if y'all knew this or not, but Uncle Doug died today.
It's just yesterday.
Yesterday. I think that just leaves one. At that family. That's a hard working family, most of them. Reason Dennis went to work, he told me one time, reason he went to work with the county was he was tired of picking wood with his titty. They did have a skidder, he was chucking it up. Short, they were short wooden. Yeah, he, he knew they were something on the side loading the log, blue heaven. So he's probably the best known one. David worked with us. Charles, I know him through the family and he was in school, at the same school, not with me or, or Miss Usher, Mr. Billy, but he was in the same school that we were, that we were at. And then, as I said, well, Trevor is my nephew. His, his mother, uh, his mother's major, my brother Ronnie, so, uh, so where do we go from here?
When, 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 do we, do we need to make a decision tonight? I'm, I'm asking the council.
We need to start by January one.
By January one?
If possible, sooner than possible, but if not, at least by January one. There's a lot to do around here.
I do believe that Charles applied once before too. He may have applied at the same time Tim did or Tim did.
Same time Tim did.
And did he, is he the one that withdrew an application?
No.
No, who, did, did somebody withdrew an application, did they not, at one of those times?
That was one.
Okay, I was thinking we got somebody that did and they withdrew. Uh, I, to answer your question, I don't suppose that we have to pick one tonight. If we're ready to, we can. Uh, if, if, um, if we don't, uh, we, then, then I think that puts us in a position, these become tabled and we can advertise for more if we wanted to advertise for more until December. And that puts us off on the hiring and things like that, so I think we need to.
Well, I don't think you need to drag it out.
No.
You go ahead, you gonna make, you gonna make some disappointed weeks, it's okay, I mean, you know?
There'll be, there'll be at least four.
It's always gonna be that way.
Are we ready to make a decision tonight?
Can we narrow it down to maybe two?
I don't wanna go another month of five decisions, I mean, just go ahead and do it and get it all well.
You can narrow it down to two, then maybe inside the side, okay?
And then make it a decision on them two?
Well, if, if you two, because my two, your two, your two, your two, we may wind up with all five of them in a mix anyway.
That's true.
Let's narrow it down to one.
That's what I'm saying.
Ultimately, that's the answer.
That's the answer.
Okay, what does somebody think?
My opinion, the one I want the best is Dallas. And the reason is, he's grew up, he's been here, he's very well-known in this town. He's got a lot of experience. He's not j- hot from this job to that job. He, he's just a citizen of Mossall that I feel like people can go to.
And he likes this town, that's why I like, I like when he sits there.
And he, and I'm gonna tell you something else he does. He keeps a nice place, him or his wife, both of them, I mean, together. Yeah, I mean, better than I do, so I'll, I'll do that one.
Me too.
So you made-
My place would look a lot better if my wife's health was a little better.
Name's good, that don't sound good.
Did you say my health would be better?
If her health.
If her health.
Well, if her, if her health were better, it's-
Yeah, if my health was better than my wife.
He's trying to say your health is better. Then he would, it would all look good.
We're very fortunate to have to go to applications as we, as we do. I did notice Mr. Montgomery also ran equipment and things like that. He, he said we asked for the last two jobs and his last two jobs didn't have a person on there, so.
But he, he ain't even working now, is he?
No.
Well, that, that, that don't sound good to me. I mean, that's my opinion, okay? I, and if, you know what, that's just my opinion, I mean. Cause I know people can find work if they get out there and work.
Are we gonna come back in six months and evaluate him?
We do.
Give you that.
Before, Tim will be evaluated in January before he becomes permanent.
Yeah, so he's still on probation, Tim is.
Or at the February workshop, uh, six months is up in January, but the February workshop, he will be evaluated and hired permanently, or in January.
Or, or extended, is, yeah. And that's one thing that we don't, we never have practiced here, but, but I did. Our labor, we had a, a labor attorney, so we had to be very careful. Had an input one time that, that I put back on probation for several years, because there was some, there were some things, uh, production, accuracies, attendance and some things like that. Uh, we, we can do that, but we've never had to do that here. Or never chosen it.
How old is Dallas?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Ain't that much, we might only be that much. But he's about fifty-five.
Yeah, uh, I think Charles is probably, and we can't, we can't ask by age, but we just, we, he told us, he's gonna be your oldest. And I think David, he said he's on social security, so that would be at sixty-six.
David and I are about sixty-three, we're, we're the same age.
Um, so Trevor, probably twenty-five, about that.
You know, David was good when he was here, I'll say this, but, you know, he quit, okay? Uh, you know, he had it late, but he was sort of taught into quitting, okay? But that don't sound too good, I, I mean, you know, that, that, so that's my opinion. Now, I tell him for his face that.
Well, we do, we do. Somebody, somebody else might need their turn.
Yeah.
That's kind of, um, I've kinda seen that, seen that over the years as well, where we have, we have rehired, but, but sometimes commissioners think, well, he, he had a chance and he chose to do something else.
Well, I mean, well, that's true, I mean, you know?
Well, you don't want to give him the impression that he can go and come every time he gets mad.
Exactly.
Every time, time something don't go his way.
We had, we had some that did that for two or three times. And, and I'm just talking again for a few times, I've done that two, three times, because they had influence with a particular strong council of, of, uh, commissioner or something like that. But that, that, not that we were a large group, but that just don't send a good message to the rest of you people out there. I can, I can go and come, I can try, try a truck for three months, if I don't like it, I come back. Or I can farm for six, six months and come back and I'm like, yeah. But if I can get going, I'm just going, it sends a long kind of message. Am, am I, am I hearing, and I'm only asking, I'm not suggesting, am I hearing that, uh, that Dallas probably flukes to the top among voters? I like that, uh, I, I think, what can we discuss now, when we talk to the attorney? I think we, we may have a, we may have had, had been advised, we had a problem there before, he did not discuss this. Do you know what, Mr.?
Mr. Carter said as long as he's on, uh, you know, when he, when he first applied, which was, you know, six months ago, he was just out and, but now he's on probation and has no violations or anything, just so we could consider him if we chose to do so.
Okay. He's on a federal, not, not use, but a federal traffic.
Traffic charge, yes.
Charge, he's on probation. And, uh, anyone who, who kinda feels like that we're pretty moral issues and do what we want to, know how, personal strong moral convictions about it, I pick up a package and, and hoard it to somebody else, fifty minutes, right? And across the line, it used to be in a federal thing. Don't know that that's what happened, but then we know, we know that that was. But you'd have, you'd have a worker, uh, that whole family, that whole family were, well, except Curtis. Curtis wore peanuts.
I see his turn, I see his turn.
Okay, for the sake of time, we can be through by seven-thirty if we, if we're ready to make up our mind. And if we're not, we can take it.
Seven-thirty, seven-thirty, I take it?
Have we, have we, have we come to, have, Mr. Parker said let's narrow it down to one. Have we, have we come to one? Has everybody come to let them outside the side, this may be our choice? Are we there yet?
I'm there.
You don't have a reservation? You're there, you are, are you, you're there? Okay.
I'm good.
Is it all, is everybody's first choice, Mr. Carter? Yes, yes. I need a motion of that effect.
I make a motion.
A second then.
We have a motion in a second that we hire Mr. Carter. And we still want him started in January, but this is our clerk in December. Do we still want to start him in January?
We need a lot of thing up down here. If we, if we can get the drug test done, you know, next week will be a bad week to get it done, cause most everybody's closing all week, you know? But we can get it done by the middle of December, you know?
He might get a Christmas check.
If we've made a mistake, if we've made a mistake this evening, and I need your opinions on this, all of you, if we've made a mistake this evening, you know, you know what, what we didn't do? The man that's gotta work these, hold up, had some input on that. He, has he sent these applications? Does Timmy send these?
Yes.
He's the man that's got, he's the man.
Yes, he's, he's talked to everyone, I was coming up to him.
Has he expressed any, any preference?
Yes, sir, Mr. Carter or Mr. Montgomery is his preference.
Carter or Montgomery. So if we, if we choose Carter tonight, then that will be within his, will be within his premises. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
He's even, he's even talked to me, you're-
Tim has?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, having the motion in a second and discussion on the motion. How you voting, Swiss?
Yes.
Which one's now?
Yes.
Which one?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
And Sheriff O'Shea's. If you're gonna get that. And, and I know it's, I know it's, it may seem silly or something like that, but would you let, would you send a letter to all of these applicants?
I sent, yeah, I sent a letter to all the clerk.
All the clerk, yeah, that's good, that's good. I've sent a couple of the clerk, oh, at least one of them, and I thank them for Tim and filling out an application and things like that. And, uh, but if we let them know that this is not somebody that takes life, if I send them a, a letter and thank them for that, if you're smiling, do you need to leave back?
Yeah, we got social security numbers on it, so I don't leave them out.
If you have applications, if you please turn back to them. Okay, anything else for the-
You know, the women's applications?
Obviously, they all have social security numbers on them, so we can't-
Why don't we just give you mine?
That's okay.
I don't keep a lot of this stuff like that.
John picks his book, cleaned out every one.
Well, that's what we do, I mean, it ain't right now.
Here's mine, Mark.
Y'all getting new books next month, so if you wanna keep these at home or whatever you wanna do with them, I'll sort them in the shed or whatever. You will be getting new books next month. Some of yours you keep, I know you keep all yours, Roger.
I was gonna say, I think I got every one of mine. Put mine in the shed.
Not that yours you get in the shed.
I will let you read, actually, let you recycle mine, here's an application from way back when, Tim.
I thought I didn't take much, I don't take much out.
Okay. I'll take a couple of these things out that I will keep bringing back till you do something about it.
I can.
And then, uh, and then you can, you can recycle my book if you like.
Okay.
This is the, uh, Fossum Palace.
Yeah, we got those in the main filing there.
We'll, we'll start talking about it again and I'll see you drag it out.
We got our septic tanks pumped this week and they're good to go. We don't have to redo any septic tanks at the palace, that's, that's-
Really?
Really.
That's surprising.
It is, I was down there this week pumping them out, sort of pumpers. So we should, in a perfect world, get building permits here.
I don't know that'd be fostered. We, we probably had a contract to build that building.
I, well, I don't know, we had, they were concrete, cinder block tanks, they said they passed.
They fostered, built, built this, uh, building or ship. Okay, recycle this and that. And, uh, anything else from the council? entertain a motion to adjourn, to order adjourn.
All of the first, y'all, all of the first.